Good evening, everyone. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 14th, 2023 to the Home Use Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all the meetings of this body are hosted in City Hall 78 Bayers Street.
Yeah, you over there, let's have a little bit of a, um, go by the picture.
Caldwell, here. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Looking for the well, just like a sale.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer. Brody. Ms. Varela. Mr. Dornau.
Here.
Ms. Sevilla.
Here.
We have a court.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, the flexible, turning it to Dr. Johnson.
Ready salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Reminder that our next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. Uh, moving to item number three, we have a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight. In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, we have students here from New Brunswick Middle School Dance Academy under the direction of Shawna Hastings and Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts Dance Academy under the direction of Alyssa Rizzo to perform for you this evening. Dance as a universal form of expression transcends language and serves as a profound conduit for storytelling and cultural celebration. Through the graceful movements, vibrant costumes, and the passion of our student performers, we will embark on a journey that not only showcases the rich traditions of Hispanic heritage, but also underscores the power of art and creativity in education. Please welcome Middle School Vice Principal, Ms. Norma Jackson, to introduce the New Brunswick Middle School dancers.
Good evening. Plamenko dance evolved over centuries, blending diverse musical and cultural elements to create a unique and emotional art form with roots in Andalusia, Spain. In 2010, United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization recognized plamenko as an intangible cultural heritage of humanity, acknowledging its cultural significance and global impact. Please welcome our soloist Gabriela Cabrera as she dances plamenko. Next, you will see the Eighth Grade Dance Academy come onto the stage to perform a bachata dance. Bachata is a popular genre of Latin American music that originated in the Dominican Republic. It is characterized by its distinctive blend of romantic lyrics, rhythmic guitar melodies, and a variety of influences including bolero, son, merengue, and other Latin American Afro-Caribbean styles. Bachata music has a unique and recognizable sound that reflects the cultural and emotional richness of the Dominican Republic. Over the years, bachata has evolved and incorporated elements of other musical genres like pop, rock, and R&B, resulting in modern variations. And now, the Eighth Grade Dance Academy performs "Promise." Thank you. Okay, good evening. Thank you to the Board of Ed for hosting us tonight. Uh, we from Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts are so proud to present to you today our eighth grade dance academy students performing the merengue, originating from the Dominican Republic, but its joy has spread to many different countries and many different cultures throughout the world.
Thank you. I hope you enjoyed those performances.
Can we please give another applause for our kids? I don't know about everyone else, but I think I feel like I was very good at it. As a Latina, we celebrate being Latinos every single day. My radio definitely says that too, so. We're moving to item number four, the minutes for September 19th, 2023, the monthly board meeting, meeting minutes. Can I please have a motion?
So move.
Brocal.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Abstain.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. Aubrey Johnson.
Good evening. As of September 2023, we have enrolled 9,301 students. There was one case of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had 59 suspensions. Our staff attendance was at 96% and our student attendance at 92%. For the month of September, there were 27 positive COVID cases for employees and 29 positive cases for students. We are excited to announce our upcoming parent-teacher conferences this week for students in grades K-2 through 8 on October 18th, 19th, and 20th, and next week for our high school students on October 26th. On these days, there will be early dismissal for all students. During these conferences, we encourage parents to share their insights, their ideas, their concerns, and expectations about their child's education. We in turn will provide parents with a comprehensive overview of their child's progress, their strengths, and areas of growth. It's really important that we note that these conferences are just not an information session. They're a conversation. We encourage parents to ask questions, seek clarification, and engage in a meaningful dialogue with their child's teachers and administrators. It's a valuable opportunity for us to collaborate, communicate, and work together as partners in our students' and our children's education. Also to strengthen this partnership, we invite parents to join the parent-teacher organization, which we call the PTO, which is part of a school's success. We believe that the partnership between parents, teachers, and school community is essential in creating the best possible educational experience for our children. Your ideas, your perspectives, and your feedback matters. By joining the PTO, you have the opportunity to be part of helping shape the direction of the school. The PTO serves as the heart of its partnership, connecting us all with the shared goal to provide a nurturing, inspiring, and enriching environment for our children and students. Also, for those parents who would like to continuously volunteer at our schools, we do have volunteer forms that you can take on your way out, and we encourage our parents to volunteer in our school buildings. In collaboration with the Ultra Care Pharmacy, St. Peter University Hospital, Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, we hosted clinics that provided flu vaccines for 14 students and 511 students. Our next vaccine clinic is scheduled for Saturday, October 21st. Also, through our continued partnership with New Jersey Black Women Physicians Association and New Brunswick Tomorrow, we will continue to host clinics at retro school to offer flu vaccines to students, parents, and staff ages five years and up. Lead testing, COVID testing, and diabetes education will also be available. Suicide Prevention Month ended in September, but the Brunswick's commitment to suicide awareness and prevention is not confined to a single month. We will continue to put the emotional and physical well-being of our staff and students at the forefront of our work. Furthermore, we stand united in the fight against breast cancer, recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. During this month, we celebrated an array of events that exemplified the diversity and dedication within our school district. Throughout the month of October, we are acknowledging Principals Month, honoring our school leaders' commitment to education excellence. On October 2nd, National Custodians Day, we extended our heartfelt gratitude to our custodian staff for their tireless efforts in maintaining a clean and safe environment for our students. On October 6th, we expressed our appreciation for our dedicated coaches on National Coaches' Day, who guided and support enriched the lives of our student athletes. And lastly, on October 25th, we take pride in the Brunswick Public Schools presenting at the New Jersey School Board of Conference on the vital topic of VR and youth mental health, showcasing our district's innovative approach and strides in supporting our students' well-being. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Um, can I please have a motion for a vote for the superintendent's report? Rock call, please.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela, excuse me. Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number six, the student representative report, Ms. Perez. Welcome, Ms. Perez.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jaylen Perez. I'll be presenting the student report. Everyone was excited to be welcomed into New Brunswick High School Spirit Week on Monday, October 16th, 2023, that kicked off Wednesday. All fall sports have celebrated their senior nights honoring all senior athletes. We congratulate NBA Chess Cross Country Team Victory of the Division Championship Title for the second year, and we congratulate New Brunswick High School Boy Soccer Team Advancement to the GMC Quarterfinals. This week, NBA Chess is celebrating Spirit Week's culminating in our yearly homecoming game and dance. Over the past two years, the Student Council has been working to improve the culture and climate at NBA Chess. This year, we've seen a great improvement in our student involvement. Our advisory classes are working on various activities such as celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, promoting our SEL goals for our students. Our building administrations have put initiatives in places that limit students in the hallways, which have been successful. We have successfully administered the NJGPA Graduation Requiredness Exam to most of our seniors, and we're currently in the process of makeup testing for students who have missed their original administration. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for Thursday, October 26th, 2023, from 1:00 to 3:00 and 6:00 PM to 8:00, 8:00 PM. Parents are encouraged to come to the high school or attend virtually. This concludes the student representative report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Perez. I wasn't here for the September meeting, but welcome. And as your senior year, we're looking forward to working with you this year, and we hope you enjoy it, okay? And remember, you are the most important person on this table. Thank you. Um, moving to item number seven, the Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Edward Spencer, Chair Person.
Good evening. Good evening. Facility Committee met on Wednesday, October 4th. Following the survey report, the New Blanquita Valente Community School, we're currently working on closing out the punch list, which is an itemized list of all unfinished or not functioning work or equipment. The boilers have been started and boiler training for the Brunswick Public School Maintenance and Custodial Staff is scheduled for tomorrow. We have paid a total of $146.4 million to date. The August invoice is expected to be $2.7 million, which will be putting us at a total of $49.1 million. The high school gym addition, the high school gym is on schedule. The initial site work and the concrete foundation is complete. The erection of the steel structure is 90% complete. The steel deck for the roof is almost complete. The schedule calls for the exterior wall and roof to be placed before the end of the year. This will allow work to continue inside throughout the winter. We're still on schedule to have the project completed by the summer of 2024. Lead water testing, we completed the district-wide lead water testing this summer. We included the new school in the testing. Of the 501 locations, seven came back above the acceptable limits of 15 parts per billion. As a result, these locations will remain closed until they are remediated and retested. The test results and full report can be found on our website. I'm happy to announce that the board and our administration were able to make the case for the New Jersey School Development Authority to purchase the Pathways Campus Building at 40 Van Dyke. The purchase was justified by our desire to elevate overcrowding at our middle school grades. We will provide further information as we progress. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spencer. Um, moving to item number eight, the Athletic Committee Report, and, um, Mr. Dornau will be doing their report.
Thank you, Madam President. The fall season is nearing the end, and there are a lot of highlights as we continue into the postseason. Boys soccer is playing as we speak in the second round of the GMC Tournament as a number three seed against South River. They had a big victory over number two seed South Brunswick just before the tournament began, as well as a first-round victory over Woodbridge. Girls soccer had a thrilling win in the first-round GMC Invitational over Calvary Christian that had to be settled in six rounds of penalty kicks. Boys and girls cross country remain undefeated, and as they captured their second consecutive GMC Blue Division Championships last week, led by juniors Anthony Santos and Emily Lopez-Gonzalez. Also, the New Brunswick Marching Zebras had their first band competition and placed in first place in their division. They will finish their season at the state championships on October 28th at Townes River. Esports has had a great season in the three-on-three game Rocket League. They are currently undefeated at 5-0 and are at the top of the division, poised to make the playoffs with two matches remaining. At the middle school level, both the girls and boys soccer teams remain undefeated with a record of 5-0 and 7-0 respectively. Football had their first win since pre-pandemic in decisive fashion over East Brunswick, winning 36-0. This past weekend, the New Brunswick Athletic Hall of Fame welcomed 13 new inductees at the return of their annual banquet. Inductees included Adolfo Casco, Peter Katnies, Jamal James, Ronald Hush, Keith Morris, Walter Virgil, Tommy Jones, Tiara Bryant, Tina Jones, Ray McGee, Coach Oscar Overby, and New Brunswick High School owner, Ms. Dawson. Winter sports signups for both middle school and high school are underway with the sports including basketball, wrestling, and cheerleading at both the middle school and high school level. The high school also has a bowling and indoor, uh, the high school also has bowling and indoor track. We are looking forward to a successful winter season. That is my report, and I need a reconciliation for September's report.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And I'm sure we're going to be posted in the location where the championship will be, right? Yeah, so for anyone that would like to attend for a band.
Actually.
Um, they have, and there's a website that we can provide the information for anyone who would like to attend. Um, the band looks like they're having a great time, and they are now won their first competition, so can we please get a round of applause for them? And I keep saying, they're going to have their own little following, so we need the we need the community to go and support, so thank you. So moving to item number nine, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Ms. Amber L. Seawood.
The Curriculum and Policy Committees met October 10th. We had one presentation. Uh, Mrs. Heel presented the placement results to the New Jersey CUSAC, which was conducted by the Middlesex County Executive Superintendent and that team. CUSAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. In response to the placement scores for instruction and failure, the district will be developing a district improvement plan, which will be submitted for board approval in November. There were a couple of items that require remediation. The, um, all resolutions were reviewed and approved. They are included on the consent agenda. The policies and regulations were approved and are included on the consent agenda. School Leadership Councils, this requirement, these are the policies and regulations that were abolished. School Leadership Councils, this requirement is no longer applicable to any former Abbott School District. Bridge Year Pilot Program, the last graduating class to be eligible to participate in a bridge year would have been the graduating class of 2022. The class of 2022 would have The class of two thousand twenty-two would have completed their bridge year during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Relations with vendors for Abbott districts was the next policy that's being abolished. This administrative code action and its provisions were initially a requirement for Abbott districts only. However, these provisions were made applicable for all school districts and are included in P sixty-three sixty. Political contributions. The next policy that's being abolished, school nutrition programs. This policy had been abolished and P eighty-five hundred food services has been revised to incorporate the provisions that were previously included in policy number eighty-five forty. Then we come to new and revised policies. School threat assessment team has been revised, the revised policy now makes note of a new regulation, which is school threat assessment team. The new regulation provides a step-by-step process for a district to follow when developing their school threat assessment program. You may recall, last year, the governor approved, uh, the establishment of and the Department of Education mandated all districts develop school threat assessment teams. The next policy, right of privacy. Teaching school staff has been updated to, quote, teaching staff. And we had talked about food services. The policy is the comprehensive food services policy guide that addresses the pertinent provisions of the Working Class Families Anti-Hunger Act, federal regulations and the corresponding federal guidance document, eligibility manual for school meals determining and verifying eligibility. And that, and all of these are included on our consent agenda, as I stated before, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seawood. Can I please have a motion for the policy committee report? I got overly eager here. Moving on to item number ten, the educational service commission of New Jersey, Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam President. We, as I mentioned before, Nadia Romano is the, the new superintendent. I had dinner with Mark Finkelstein, the retired superintendent, had a great, great discussion with him. She's done a wonderful job. We are near, um, our budgeted number for all of our schools. New Brunswick is number one, or actually number two, playing field's number one as far as the number of students that we're serving. Continue to saving millions, taxpayers millions and millions of dollars. So the state of the commission is great. That's my report.
Thank you so much. Moving to item number eleven, public comments, uh, Mr. General. Do we have people on the list?
Yes, I do. Um, April Nicholas.
Good evening, please state your name and address.
Hi, April Nicholas, one four three Sandham Street in New Brunswick. Uh, so I just wanna start off by saying I was really excited to see Resolution A Q, the partnership with Rutgers on climate change education. That's incredibly important, um, especially to localize the impacts and educate students on how they can take local action, so I just wanna commend schools for that partnership and very excited to, uh, hear more about that. And, uh, in the facilities report, the, was mentioned of water testing and some sites that came back unsafe and a plan for remediation testing. I'm just curious if there is a timeline for when there may be an update on that?
Can you get closer to your microphone for a second?
Sure.
Is this better?
Your question was to remediate the last seven found, right? The timeline on doing that, we're in the process of doing that now. Some of them may actually be fixed at this point and then we'll bring the testing company back in to check it before we put them back at the service.
Okay, I was wondering if there was, would be a timeline for when we might get an update on that again?
We would report back at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I also wanted to speak on a very important matter related to our entire New Brunswick community, the ongoing RWJ nurses' strike and their, you know, ongoing fight to get safe staffing for our hospitals. I think that's incredibly relevant for all institutions in New Brunswick, the Board of Education included. Obviously, all of our students and some of our staff, uh, live here, spend a lot of time here and so um, the safety and staffing, our healthcare institutions, I think is incredibly important for just, you know, everyday life here in New Brunswick. I'm wondering if, uh, the Board of Education can speak on how this ongoing strike and the fight for safe staffing has impacted our students and if there are any board members who would like to speak their feelings on this matter?
No comments on that. You have about forty-six, forty-five seconds left.
Okay, well, I would definitely encourage that if you all have not familiarized yourself with that matter yet, that you do so. I think it is incredibly relevant for students as they and their family members live here and are, you know, likely to, at some point in their lives, become patients of, uh, of these healthcare institutions. And I think that safe staffing, um, and, uh, having competent nurses that have, um, you know, enough bandwidth to properly care for their patients is really in the interest of our students and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. General.
Uh, call up Linda Stork.
Hi, Ms. Stork.
Hi, my name is Linda Stork, I live at Twelve Park Boulevard.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Is that good?
Yes, there you go, thank you.
Twelve Park Boulevard. I was wondering about the clinics, you didn't mention COVID vaccines. Are those still available also?
They're still available, yeah.
And, and, so we are giving those at the clinic? Okay, I just heard the COVID testing and the flu vaccine. I had a question also about so a couple of things. I had noticed that the new school has around, um, eight hundred students, but it was built for a capacity of eleven hundred. So I was wondering what the plan was there and also for the Lincoln School, which had one time had been the, uh, top school on the list, actually to be replaced in New Brunswick and got knocked out of first place because there was a plan at that time, this is obviously years ago, uh, for Rutgers Graduate School of Education to have a laboratory school in that neighborhood, our neighborhood. And that, um, obviously never happened, so I wondered what was the plan for Lincoln School for the extra space in the new school? And now that I see that, um, I don't know if the S D A has already agreed to finance the purchase of Forty Van Dyke. But I, I don't know if that was part of the plan all along or what is the plan exactly? I would have liked to see something done about Lincoln School, which is the only public school left in the fifth and sixth ward. And obviously, if we're gonna appeal to families at all, I mean, beautiful neighborhoods for families, except if we don't have, add a public school, um, then it's not attractive. The new school is beautiful, but it's, it's not in the neighborhood. And it's also huge. And I understood from the comments on the school lunch about eligibility. I had, I was under the impression that we were now giving the free meals to everyone and not trying to do all the applications, is that correct or incorrect?
New Brunswick School District is part of the community eligibility provision program to feed students. Due to that program, we provide free lunch and breakfast to all students in New Brunswick. It is separate from the other programs that the government did during the pandemic where they fed everyone for free. Right, and now they're going back to people pay.
Now they're telling people to pay?
No, we are in a, we are called the C E P program where all students get them for free. If you're, you're talking about the household surveys, they are not free and reduced lunch applications, although they look exactly like a free and reduced lunch application. They are not. They are a household survey that parents need to fill out in order for us to continue to get the state aid we deserve based on our population. So
Okay.
one has nothing to do with the other. It used to way back when, when we were, were at the C E P school.
Okay.
But now one has nothing to do with the other.
All right, thank you for clearing that up. And might I know how to find out about the plan for Lincoln School and the extra space in, uh, Laquita Valente School and
Stork, we thank you for your comment, Stork, it, your time's up, so.
Okay, but I understand it, you're not gonna answer the questions right now, but how would I find that out? How can I know what is the plan for the public school in my neighborhood?
Mr. Stork, um, in your comment, you spoke about Laquita Valente, then you spoke about Lincoln School, and then you spoke about Pathway Campus. I'll try and give you from my lens. There is no conversation to close Lincoln School and put students into Laquita Valente, if that's what you were inferring? Right, so, um, the second part is Lincoln School is part of our long-range facility plan. So that's still on paper as one of the schools that need to be, um, redone. In terms of the Pathway Campus and the funding that we received, um, from the D O E, that funding was to reduce overcrowding in schools, which we felt, um, the middle school was was, is very overcrowded and to reduce that, uh, we did start the plan where, as you know, we do have students in the Pathway Campus now, which has relieved a lot of press pressure of still enrolling from the, from, from the middle school. So over the next two, three years, we hope to actually cut the enrollment in half. Have a middle school of six hundred students and a Pathway Campus of six hundred students. So, um, the funding mechanism is looking now at Pathway Campus to, um, to acquire that. I'm mistaken.
Okay. But that, as they, they, as they, at this point, they haven't agreed to do that?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Have, have they agreed to do that?
We are working on it as we speak and to think, uh, Mr. Spencer said we'll provide further information once we receive that.
Okay, and is there a place to access the long-term facilities?
Yes, I believe so.
If you can reach out to Mr. General in the business office, we can get you a copy of that latest, uh, long-range facility plan.
Okay, thanks very much.
Next speaker, Mr. General.
Yes, Carlos Ramirez.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, board members. My name is Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick today. I just wanted to ask the board if they have any comments or care to explain to parents how a four-year-old student at Red Shaw Elementary School managed to leave, bypassed security and returned home over eight blocks away on September twenty-one. And I understand that the mother has tried multiple times to speak with school faculty at that location as well with administrators in the Baldwin Building and she has been turned away with no response or no follow-up information of who she can talk with or any video of how the kid left. However, she has been sent the cops to her house as well as child protection services and, uh, she also shared that she is concerned to bringing the child back. I have not yet followed up if she did send this kid back to school, as she stated that she did not plan to return the kid back there. I did wanted to also bring up, uh, the new Blanquita Community School. Uh, my last visit, I noticed that there were some of the doors connecting to the exterior side of the buildings that did have some type of cover or some long cushion, as I could put it as, protecting from the rain coming in. I noticed that some of the doors were at least three, four inches off the floor with no weather stripping to protect from the exterior water coming into the building. So I also wanted to ask who would be the best person from the Board of Education or the school district to communicate for media and press, um, comments or information such as as the security director did not respond to attempts for comment on the Red Shaw School Elementary breach.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Um, in regards to the incident at the Red Shaw School, just for clarity, um, it's a fortunate incident. Immediately, um, police was notified, as well as D F I S. That investigation is still ongoing, so I'm out of the liberty to discuss much about it. Um, I do know that the parents have, uh, tried to communicate and have communicated with the principal as well as, uh, my bilingual supervisor, the director here at Central Office. As soon as we receive, once the investigation is concluded, we'll be able to provide more information, uh, to the parent. Uh, based on the knowledge that I have, the parent disenrolled their child, uh, from the school. However, we are still working closely to provide enough information at the parent request. In regards to the weather stripping, uh, we are aware of that. Um, I wanna believe that should be temporarily have been taken care of, but we're working to, uh, provide more weather stripping for the exterior doors. You're talking of the exterior doors that's within the playground, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're working on that. We did put a temporary, um, barrier, but that's, that's, that's not a hard fix, we'll get that done.
And, and that is complete at that point. As Mr. Spencer pointed out in his facility report, we're working on the punch list item, which is items, small items that need to be wrapped up. But that weather stripping, as you pointed out, has been replaced or actually installed now at this point.
Great. Now, uh, is there anybody that from the board that one can reach out to for media contacts? Because we reached out to some members and no response. Is there somebody who is designed to speak with the media for comments or questions? Is there somebody assigned to it or do we just pray some member of the board answers?
You can send your request to Dr. Johnson.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Next speaker, Mr. General, and I just wanna remind everyone that we have three seconds of public comments. I mean, sorry, three minutes, three minutes. Please state your name and address.
I was gonna call Lillian Hernandez, but Mr. Crowder will go right ahead.
Lillian Hernandez.
I don't wanna skip the line, Lillian's here.
Oh, so you're not skipping the line anymore.
Okay. Um, good evening, Charlie Crowder, New Brunswick, in New Brunswick today. Um, what I think, asking if I, if I hang out for the executive session, will I be able to leave with a copy of the personnel report? Can somebody provide me the paper copy after the meeting? Can somebody provide me the paper copy after the meeting?
I believe our policy is that will be posted the next morning. I think that's the policy. If it's not amended.
If it's not amended, if it's amended, then I'll be out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's no amendments, I could get one tonight, is what I'm hearing?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Right, we, we still, we need to actually have the report, so.
Understood. And I, I wanted to ask, what is the, how does the board go about hiring substitute teachers? Do you do it yourself? Do you do it through a contractor? And do they get hired by the administration and then ratified afterwards by the board? Or do you get a say before they're hired?
I'll let Ms. Ramirez answer that question. She's our Director of Personnel.
Good evening. Substitutes are hired through the district board office.
Through the administration? And then do they make their way onto a personnel report later?
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to raise to the board's attention concern that's been raised to me that Raymond Trigg is now a substitute teacher for the district. I'm asking these questions because I want to confirm whether or not that's the case. Draw your attention to a June 22nd, 2020 article that I wrote and published on New Brunswick Today. It's titled, Commander of Domestic Violence Unit Used MVPD Phone to Stalk Woman. I think we've talked about this individual before and just, you know, the, the basics are that he was in charge of school matters here for the police department. He did use a city-owned cell phone to stalk and harass a young woman, sent her nude pictures using that phone. And, you know, the article documents, the text messages we reviewed, where he admitted to calling the woman 43 times in a single day and sent the woman inappropriate images using that phone. And I would like to confirm, is it true that Raymond Trigg is now a substitute teacher for the district?
Yes, based on the knowledge that I have, yes, he is.
Well, that is cause for concern. And I would ask that each of the board members, if you're asked tonight to approve a personnel report with his name in it, that you decline to do so. I don't think that this is a person who belongs teaching kids in our school district. And I think I'm not the only one with that opinion. I encourage you to vote down him being a substitute teacher for the district respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Who's the next speaker, Mr. General?
No, that concludes, there's no other speakers.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the president's report. I think I want to take, last week, last monthly meeting, I wasn't here, and I want to talk a little bit on why I wasn't here. I had the opportunity to attend an emergency response training that was actually facilitated by Homeland Security throughout FEMA. And it was Hispanic at the time, Latino, like, officials from pretty much the nation that were really getting trained on the emergency response systems at the national level and how do we best serve our communities. These are conversations that I'm bringing back to our district. Happy to report that a lot of the, the reports and recommendations we have been, already been doing at the district level. And it's very eye-opening also to see what other districts and cities are dealing with when we talk about extreme heat, when we talk about flooding. And not just, you know, if rain one day and/or one day we get really bad rains, we're talking about weeks on end, right? We're talking about cities that are now being affected. So as I said, sit here to serve my community. I'm definitely grateful that I was able to sit in those conversations so I can bring back and, and bring recommendations that can better prepare for, hopefully, never to have an emergency, but if the event that we do, that we know how to move forward, so. And ending also with, with Hispanic Heritage Month. She's not here today, but I wanted to take at the time to talk about one of our fellow board members, Ms. Jacenia Hernandez. I was at an event, anyone that knows Homecoming from Rutgers, happened this Saturday. There was a couple of events that were happening around. And there was an event at the Zimmerman Lee where Jacenia Hernandez and a couple of her, at the time, fellow classmates actually created the first Latino organization at a higher level that then became the first Latino nationally known in the U.S. So these were all sorority sisters, and it was just great to see that we have someone within us that has created and ripple change, not just for Latinas, but for all our students that look like us, so. She's not here today, but if you see her, just congratulate her on that, so. And that completes my report. So moving on to item number 13, the Consent Agenda Resolutions A through R. Can I please have a motion?
Before I take the roll call, actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to just point to the results from the CUSAC monitoring from the county. I think as one of the resolutions on the agenda, I forget the letter right now, but it's important to report out these actual scores per, per area. So for instruction and program, we achieved a 75%. For fiscal management, 100%. Governance, 95%. Operations, 95%. And personnel, 100%. So that is the CUSAC interim placement results based on the county and state of New Jersey scores. Thank you. I will now take a roll call. Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, I'm staying on T.
T as in Tom?
Yep.
So noted. Motion approved.
Moving to item number 14, Finance Report. Mrs. Diana Solis, chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. All members of the Finance Committee, along with the members of the entire board, had a chance to review the Finance Committee and just need a motion to approve it. Thank you.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes, I've stayed on page 16.
So noted. Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, I've stayed on page 26.
Motion approved.
Moving to item 15, resolution for a closed session. Whereas the Open Meeting Act, New Jersey SA 1046, provides a certain matters of where public body may be discussing closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters and matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be resolved that the offer set subjects may be discussing closed session by this Board of Education and its administrative staff in the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Meetings, Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Can I please have a motion for closed session? Roll call, please.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz? Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
We are closed session. We'll be back.